...
Meeting will now come to order, please rise for a moment of silence to pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is silent, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Reba.
Mr. Bonomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fume.
Here.
Mrs. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Garcia.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
And now at this time, we will have any questions from the audience on agenda items only. Mr. Fume, any signups?
Yes, Lynn Frumkin.
Good evening, my name's Lynn Frumkin and I'm a teacher in the Hazelton area school district. And I'd like to address agenda item number 11. And whatever plan you choose, please keep in mind that you should also be looking at the attendance policy and change that accordingly. Actually, last year, there was an article in the newspaper from one of our local employers and she had to fire an employee and the girl said to her, "But I only took five days off this month." So, keep in mind that we are building a work ethic. Our students don't get a work ethic the day they get a job. So, if students are scheduled, they need to be in school that day. Just like when they get a job, if they did that habit when they were in school, they'll show up for work also. So, I think we have to also look at the attendance policy. Thank you.
Mr. Fume?
Terry Redwinski.
Good evening. Terry Redwinski, President of the Hazelton area education support professionals. I want to clarify that the general secretary's listed, a superintendent's office is actually the secretary to Mr. Gennadi. And there is still two confidential secretaries, even though there is only the need for one confidential secretary. What would the savings be if one of the two confidential secretaries were eliminated from those positions? Because they're non-classified, so they get whatever raises the board decides to give them. If we need to farm out print shop work, what is the actual savings to the district? As that amount will not have to be eliminated and deducted from the savings the district is anticipating. As the president of the HAESP, I have not had the opportunity to view the job descriptions for the five and a half hour secretary positions. Has the description changed from the current general secretary description? Are you eliminating the full-time or part-time secretary from the guidance secretary? Who will be responsible for getting the transcripts for the 800 seniors as well as filling requests for transcripts from former students? Combined with the regular duties of the guidance secretary, considering we now have a full and a part-time secretary who struggled to fill all the requirements in a timely manner. I would like to remind the board that job duties belonging to the HAESP cannot be given to non-bargaining unit members, as this is diversion of bargaining unit work and could result in filing for arbitration. And I would also like to confirm that if a four-day work week is implemented, they guaranteed 180 days of work for our cafeteria workers will be adhered to. Can anyone answer any of those questions?
I could address the guidance secretary. Right now, we do have the retiring position not in the budget. The part-time secretary position is in the budget.
So, can you tell me then, how do we figure that a part-time secretary is going to be able to do transcripts for all those students as well as anyone else that calls that's been a past student and needs transcripts for college? Some of them going way back. I know when I needed mine, I graduated in 1976, they had to go back into the archives to find mine. So, it's, I know we have to make cuts, I understand that, but I think we have to look at where we're cutting. I don't understand how something like that could be, you know, helpful to the district. I see it causing problems for students going on to college and such. If they don't get their transcripts in in time, doesn't that cause problems for them when they go to register for college?
Ms. Redwinski, having spent most of my career in high schools, I know exactly what you're talking about. There's a terrific load there, workload. We're mindful of that. I am moving forward, working with Mr. Patron, looking at some options for the dilemma that you described. So, moving forward, it's very important to us. We certainly don't want to disadvantage any of our students in terms of paperwork or transcripts or anything that would inhibit their speedy admission or application in any post-secondary institutions.
Okay.
And if I could comment quickly on the two confidential secretaries upstairs. Again, we're not absent, plenty of work in the district. In my humble opinion, having worked with both of those individuals the last three years, there is a lot of work that's encumbered in those two positions. And whereas the assistant superintendent no longer exists, that doesn't mean in fact that there is not plenty of work for those two individuals, plenty of work and meaningful and important work as well.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean they have to be confidential. So, maybe it could fill in one of the voids. And can you address the four-day work week and 180 days guaranteed work for the cafeteria workers?
We discussed this last week and we do acknowledge that there's 180 days in their agreement, so we would have to abide by it.
So, they will be guaranteed that work?
Yes.
Thank you.
One quick thing too, on the part-time secretary's job description, they will keep the same duties as was existing in the full-time general secretary in those three buildings.
Mr. Fume?
Patrice Okrasinski.
Hi, I'm Patrice Okrasinski from the Hazelton area support staff. I have a couple of questions on behalf of the secretaries. We were just discussing the job description. We were wondering how many months that job would be? Is that an all-year job or?
Those new part-time secretaries, the three of them are outlined in the contract agreement, they are school year positions, so they do not work the summer.
They do not work during the summer?
They do not, yes.
If you would consider that every moment in the office could be chaotic, how do you expect the office to run effectively? Now that secretaries are the first line of defense, when visitors come to the door, do you have any concerns that there will only be one secretary in the office at high-volume times of the day? How is a five and a half secretary going to be able to accomplish what an eight-hour secretary accomplished in a day effectively? While adding additional duties such as the duties now curated with the elimination of the print shop technician?
All good questions. Just to point out, the five and a half hour secretary is part-time, no benefits, it's a lower-cost alternative. That position does not provide a lunch, so in an eight-hour secretary's day, they have a one-hour lunch. So, really, the equivalent we're comparing to is six and a half versus eight, so it's ultimately about an hour and a half less. And we're gonna have to try to work it out and get through it.
Yes, we are.
That is only in the three buildings where there are retirements, so it actually isn't going.
Right, I understand that, but it's still three buildings that will be short. You know, trying to do everything. And there's probably gonna have to be some kind of priority list of what has to be done first.
Yeah, certainly, we can only do what's humanly possible. We do want our work environment to be one where folks do want to come to work and enjoy their jobs. And I, you know, certainly a situation where added work, added stress, but you know, if we work together as a team, perhaps we can combat some of these reductions together.
Thank you.
Mr. Fume?
Marie Bukmanovich.
Marie from Drums?
From Drums, Marie. Mary Makuta.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Makuta, former school district dental hygienist. I began working in the school district in 1974. At the time, there were four hygienists and two mobile vans. In a time of crisis, just like now, five years later, through budget reductions, the program was decreased to one hygienist. But, we kept the hygienist because at that point, we felt that dental education was one of the most important things. A quote from the Pediatric Society of Dentistry. Tooth decay is the single most chronic childhood disease. Five times more common than asthma. Four times more common than childhood obesity. Twenty more times common than diabetes. I truly understand that we are in a financial crisis. I look around, I see everyone is in the same boat as I am. But, I have to express my sorrow at seeing this program cut now, when we truly need dental education. I look at the kindergarten teachers who witness my lectures. How many children admit to sharing toothbrushes? I appreciate your time. I want to thank everyone who has supported me over the years. Mr. Krasinski, Mr. Reba have always supported my program. The nurses, the teachers have allowed me to come into my classroom, but I must say I am saddened by the cut. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fume?
Leanne Mateo. Leanne Mateo.
My name's Leanne Mateo, I live in Drums. I also have a student, my youngest is coming into kindergarten. My concerns are about the full-day kindergarten becoming the half-day kindergarten now. I did look into some studies and I just wanted to quote what I found and I'm also a teacher not with this district, but I have seen the half-day kindergarten program in other districts and felt that it's sad for the kids because they come in and in three hours get so much crammed down their throats, they don't know what to do with it. They don't really learn, I think, as much as they would from a spread-out day, more breaks, a longer time period for these kids to digest what's thrown at them. With these Common Core standards now, it's a lot of information and they're expected to know a lot more than we did when we were kids leaving kindergarten. And it's not fair to shove that all down their throats in three hours. They're five. That's a lot for kids to take in such a short amount of time. I know I'm not comfortable with giving that my child that much information at once. I think this is a disservice to the kids, to the teachers, to the parents, everyone involved. Some of the things that I found are benefits of full-time kindergarten, greater long-term achievement, higher standardized scores in reading and math, greater social skills, higher independence, increased self-esteem, more time for formal and informal testing. I also found a study that said, stated that full-time kindergarten made all students better off while also closing the literacy achievement gap between Hispanic and non-Hispanic students by 70%. It's a huge portion of our district. We want to better all of the kids, while by doing that, by taking a full-time program out of the equation, is not helping the students. And low-income students are other ones that I found in every study are the most to benefit from this. We obviously have a large portion of low income, if we're getting a whole district-wide free lunches, that tells me our low income is pretty high in our district. And those kids who need it the most are not going to have that full-day kindergarten anymore. And it's very detrimental to them and it's very sad to me as a parent and a teacher. I understand financially, we're in a rut, but has every single aspect and avenue been checked out? Have administrative staff been asked to maybe take a pay freeze? That's been known to do in districts. From what I understand, that wasn't even presented. I don't know if that's true or not. Teachers, I mean, I know teachers would take a pay freeze. I know they have in the past in this district. We have in other districts to try to stop the furloughs, help out in that aspect. Has all, have all of those avenues really been discussed and presented to these people? I don't know. That's really all I have.
Let me, let me answer the questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
If I can. We started this budget beginning in January, twice a week. We've gone through many, many scenarios, trust me. There's three of us up here in this dais right now. Mr. Chapman and I, who are administrators and teachers in this district. Mr. Mahalik, who was a teacher in this district and is now Director Special Ed in Wilkes-Barre School District. The decisions that we think we have to make, we don't want to make. And I'm even gonna go back a little bit further, many, many years ago, when my children started kindergarten in this district, they went to full-day kindergarten. And there were just as many people at that meeting complaining about starting full-day as they are now going to half-day. We've tried not to cut any programs, which we have not. We're not like Crestwood or Wilkes-Barre where they've eliminated programs altogether. We have been able to this point, not furlough any teachers to this point. The questions that you asked, yes, our teachers are very grateful. They've been very grateful to us, I should say, or we've been very understanding that they did take a pay freeze. The one year not too long ago, they took half their pay raise the one year, so we could balance the budget. The administrators one year, I was one of them, didn't take a pay raise at all for a year. We don't have anywhere to go. Right now, with all the things that we have on the plate for tonight, we're still about $2.6 million in the hole. We just had the auditors come in from the state and the auditors told us that we should begin building our fund balance, it's getting low. Well, if we have to get to the point this year where we have to take another $2.6 million out of the fund budget balance, we'll have nothing for next year. And if you think this year's tough, maybe next year's even going to be worse. So, maybe at that point in time, we'll be doing the things that you just asked about. The people that you should be concerned with are not the people in this district. The people you should be concerned with are your legislators. We have to balance a budget by June 30th or we can lose reimbursement. The state didn't have a budget for eight, nine months, what happened? They still got paid. Other people didn't. They're the people, maybe you should go back and say to them, "You people are the problems. We are not the problems here. We're trying to survive. There are other school districts in the immediate area are broke. They went out and had to borrow money. They're paying thousands and thousands of dollars in interest because of our business office and the job they did. We didn't have to do that. So, please understand, we don't like to do what we may have to do." I have grandchildren in this school district. Some people up here have their own children in school. Mr. Mahalik has his son starting kindergarten this year. We don't like what we may have to do. Please understand.
I do understand, I just have to speak for my child.
And I understand that. And I will never, ever say anything that you don't have the right to make your presentation. You certainly do. And you have to understand, what we're trying to do is survive.
Everything up here tonight is budget-driven. Like Mr. John said, and I couldn't say it any better than him, but we have met since January quite a bit. All nine of us at times, eight, seven, whatever that numbers could be for that particular night. And you have to make some gut-wrenching decisions, even though it goes against what you really believe, because we need money. And once again, the bottom line with all this is it's budget-driven. It's not personal against anyone, any family, any employee, anybody like that. It's budget-driven.
We can't go back. In fact, I just got a letter sent to me today from a senior citizen, and I just passed it down this end of the table. Senior citizens did not get a cost of living this year. Our area is filled with senior citizens. They can't afford too much of a tax increase, if any. So, I don't know where we're gonna go. Hopefully, it's only one-year situation, but who knows?
I think there's, Mr. John said, we've run many scenarios and we've cut and looked at different options and we've done some things that saved us money that people don't even know about. For one example, in the transportation department, we have the software company coming in and we're reevaluating our routes, how we can make them more efficient. We think we could save about $500,000 there that, you know, that's helping us that, you know, we didn't even count on. So, we're looking and digging everywhere that maybe should have been done in the past and haven't, but it's being done now.
I mean, we're making cuts to our law enforcement, our security. We're making cuts to every job that gets done. There's not a project that gets done through maintenance right now and Andre's sitting out there because we argue all the time back and forth about different things, but there's not a job that goes through maintenance right now that Mr. Bonomo or myself don't actually go to the site, make sure that, does it need to be done? Can it be done differently? Can we save money? If we don't do it, how long before we have to do it again? You know, so, you know, when we needed vehicles for our police department, we went to an auction and bought used vehicles off a state auction. So, I mean, we're, we really are trying to cut everywhere and I know what you're saying, you know, I mean, and when we first talked about daytime, you know, reducing kindergarten halftime, you weren't able to get, you know, five votes out of the nine of us to save your life. And, you know, it's not until recently that it's, it's come to light that that's one of the only cuts that, you know, a lot of people are willing to have, to change their mind on at this point because we're not giving it up totally, like some programs would have to be, just disappear. Maybe languages, maybe arts, maybe sport. And, you know, we're trying to make sure that it's a fair distribution of the cuts.
I understand. I just want my kids to love to learn and all the kids, and I think this is a lot and they're not gonna, it's gonna be hard for kids to adjust to this.
And we hope that the parents step up.
I don't want them to lose their love to you.
You know, we really do.
Oh, definitely will, but...
Hope that the parents will step up and cover things and...
A lot, a majority of our kiddos coming in aren't, don't have that family support.
No, they don't have that opportunity.
It's unfortunate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fume?
Neil Graziano.
Hello, my name's Neil Graziano, I'm from Drums, PA. I'm here to speak about the half-day, full-day kindergarten. I came to speak today as a voice for the silent majority of this district, that is low-income and minority students. The reason I came here is it's close to my heart because for a living, I teach juvenile delinquents, which are overwhelmingly either minority or low-income. And I'm gonna give you facts that are undisputed. A, quality pre-primary education, like a full-day kindergarten, reduces the chance of crime today and in the future. It increases the chance of a minority or low-income student to graduate high school and move on to college. Also, for every $1 spent, that's $1, it saves our economy $3 on a pre-primary education for low-income and minority students. These are facts, 100%. I teach these types of kids on a daily basis. So, what I'm saying to you today is that a vote against full-day kindergarten is very short-sighted, especially financially. But I also feel that it's discriminatory against both low-income and minority students. They're the base, they're 65% of our school district. We're gonna say to them, "Sorry, Mr. Zola said we want families to step up." Most of these families work first shift while the other one sleeps for night shift, they go to work. Let me ask you this, what's gonna happen when that kid is staying home alone? So, now you're gonna have these parents not only busting their rump for their survival, but then they're gonna be sitting there saying, "I have nowhere to send my kid." Daycares in this town do not accept kids, they accept them for a minimum of three days. What do you want parents to do? It's impossible. We have people working different shifts just so they could send their kids to school. Now, we're gonna say, "We're gonna leave them home half-day." To 65% of our families that are low-income and minority, I'm sorry, guys, it's too short-sighted. And to me, it's discriminatory. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Graziano. I don't disagree with your facts, if that's what they were, but I would say that we've been meeting since January. And I don't think I saw you at one public meeting to put any information in.
My question for you, we have 27 high school sports. You save $79,000 from going from seventh to eighth grade basketball just to eighth grade. How much does cutting one high school sport bring in?
We're already cutting junior high school sports.
All right, no, no, I have a question.
Okay.
You went from seventh and eighth grade to eighth grade, we didn't cut anything.
See, but in the same, in the same argument, there are people here that have expressed at meetings and everywhere else that sports are as important to them as academics because it teaches, you know, students to become independent, it teaches them to be competitive, it teaches them, it keeps them off the street at night, it keeps them, you know, we, we had that, we had that same discussion tonight before our meeting, that how, how some of the board members, many of the board members felt that, you know, sports were, or played a vital role in what we owe our students. So, there's, there's a lot of different sides of the coin.
People that work one shift during the day and the other one working night shift, which I'm guaranteeing that's a large majority of our schools. What are they gonna do if they came into this year expecting their kid to be in school? I understand school isn't a childcare center, but on the other hand, how about a little bit of warning? We're standing here, what's today's date? 13th, when does school start? So, you have what, two months? Then these families are gonna have to change their entire lifestyle to figure out a way to make this work.
to make this work? This isn't fair. It's maybe we borrow a couple bucks and pay some interest, but at the end of the day...
Well, maybe, maybe that'll, maybe that'll be the answer.
Mr. Zola, excuse me, we have three minutes to go on this topic. The only question, Mr. Graziano, I have one little question, maybe we can answer in 10 seconds.
Okay.
Where do you expect us to get $5 million?
Listen, that's not...
Maybe you can help us.
That's not my problem.
That isn't your problem, it's our problem.
It is our problem.
You're saying that sports are more important than education?
No.
Nobody said that.
Nobody said that.
Nobody said that.
But here's, that's my question, what do you want these low-income and minority families to do?
I'm sorry, Mr. Graziano, I, I brought up some of these same concerns in executive session before we got down here, and I am a single parent. I wholeheartedly understand that. We have exhausted every avenue. We cannot go to the taxpayers. We can't even raise taxes enough to cover this deficit, and we're on this board four months. I would be the last person who would want to, to hurt a parent. I, I know how hard it is. But the question is, if you have an idea, please present it to us. Maybe it's something we didn't think of. But we also cannot be responsible for the people that come here and leave their children and don't contribute to this tax base. And that is unfortunately, the reality that we have been forced to face right now. People are dropping their children off here. Yes, there are parents, and there are aunts and uncles, and there's cousins who are taking care of these children, and we've had to take the burden of educating, and not a burden, but we've had to come up with the cost to educate kids when the tax base is not going up. That is the reality. We have to cut somewhere. This was the first step. If you think this is the last step, it certainly will not be. And unfortunately, yes, this is what we're left with. Not one of us up here feels good about any of the decisions that we have to make, but we have to look at the district as a whole. We have to come up with $6 million somewhere, please. If someone has a better idea, then please present it to us because we have been meeting for hours and hours and hours, several times a week for the last five months, and this is the best that we could come up with.
Does, does anyone know what we lost in tax assessments? People that appealed their taxes this past year? Anyone know that? That's what we lost in taxes that get paid to the district to educate the students. $600,000.
And they're still appealing.
I'm sorry, you just can't expect the homeowners to support this system when people are dropping their kids off here. We need to come up with a better system. We need to have our legislators help us to come up with pushing the burden from the homeowner to the wage earner, and then maybe we will be able to come up with the money that we need. But again, not everybody whose kids are being educated here are working here. So we have a huge problem in this community, and we all need to band together, not come and argue against each other because this is not going away.
If I can correct our board members here who said they have been meeting since January, that's incorrect. We've been meeting since 2009. This process has started a long, long, long time ago. We have been fortunate enough to somehow sidestep what other districts have done. There are 12,000 teachers who have been furloughed in the state of Pennsylvania. I know many of them personally, and it's very difficult. Sir, you made a lot of great points, as did the other speakers, I'm sure we're gonna hear from others. This is an emotional topic, half-day kindergarten, and it's, it's hitting home. I have fought for this since, since my very first year on the board. The question we need to ask is, why has the state cut funding for kindergarten? They gave us the funding in the pre-K counts, and then they took it away from us and said, "Here, you now take over the funding of this." We cannot. It's not a mandate, but yet, we're supposed to pay for this somehow, and we've only got two ways to raise money. One, the revenue that's allocated to us from the Department of Education, which sadly has been cut year after year after year, although some legislators will say, "No, it hasn't," and it has. I mean, numbers don't lie, and we're not fabricating this. Or second, raising taxes. That's the only two ways for us to bring in money. We can't raise taxes. We cannot raise taxes. Unfortunately, there are way, way too many senior citizens in this district who are living day by day, and we're not gonna do that to them. I do not wanna cut kindergarten. I do not, I do not wanna cut art and music and phys ed from kindergarten. I don't wanna cut anything. We are forced to do this because we have no other options. I wish there was. It's paining me, it's paining me the parents. And again, yes, we are going to hurt some kids. We understand that. We're not trying to fool you that those statistics aren't, aren't real. We're not gonna try to fool you that, that all the studies that are out there aren't, you know, legit. We're telling you, we're trying to do the least amount of damage to this district. If there's something else that can do it, we're open to it. But I don't know what it is, and we have been looking at it since 2009.
Mr. Fume, next.
That's it, Mr. President.
Anybody else from the board to make a statement before we start?
I think you called before, but we just say it last name.
Are you from Drums?
Yes.
Marie, right? Anne Marie. Maurice, just pronounce your last name first.
Carrato.
No.
Oh, your name? Anne Marie Carrato.
Well, we passed you right up.
I think I might've passed you up.
There she is, right there.
Sorry.
No. I'm here also for, as a mother of an incoming kindergarten, and I know I just heard everything that you say, but I just want, and I'm an educator, so it hits home like you. Full-day kindergarten is a sound educational investment. In the long run, it shows the statistics that full-day kindergarten boosts student achievement. Full-day kindergarten improves social and emotional skills. Full-day kindergarten, instead of half-day, is very short-sighted, which was mentioned before. Full-day kindergarten enables teachers to assess the students' needs and abilities more effectively. Teachers prefer full-time kindergarten because they can help the students learn because they spend that much more time with them daily. My concerns and questions are, I did hear at the last meeting that I attended that there would not be any layoffs for teachers, and now I see tonight that there is. Is that untrue? Or how much money the full to half-day is saving?
There's, there's one furlough for a teacher under number two. We're actually removing that until we determine the seniority under 2F, but that was the only teacher furlough that we had on the agenda.
And, and it does, and I'm speaking from my heart, I do think that this is, doesn't make matter to anyone if we're losing teachers. So I took a step back and reevaluated and thought, okay, half-day, no furloughs, but I, I'm concerned that probably there will be more furloughs even if we do take the cuts for half-day.
Did this person know that, this, this teacher that's being furloughed, it's not, it's because of other things that are happening in the district where someone came back, which means someone has to be moved around, which means that the person that's gonna be furloughed filled in.
This is not a budgetary move at all.
Okay, and one more concern. Do you understand how hard it is going to be to place the kindergarten teachers right now that are losing their position, because you're going to have to check everyone who has their instructional one, instructional two, and move with years? We do understand that, correct?
Mr. Denardi has already done it.
Okay. So this already passed, full-day?
No, no, we...
Half-day?
We, uh...
I think he meant to say Mr. Denardi looked at every person that needs to be moved somewhere and what their certifications are.
Thank you. And can I just end with one more statement? Attempting to repair reading skills in fourth grade is going to be far more expensive and risky than guaranteeing our students are getting good reading skills in kindergarten.
Do we miss anyone else? No. Okay, Mr. Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. John. Number one on the agenda, recommend board authorize the elimination and abolishment of the following positions. A to school police officers.
Any questions from any board members?
Maybe we should give the community a moment just to look at that before we vote on it. I'm not sure if everybody has an agenda.
Does everyone out there have an agenda for tonight?
It's on the screen.
It's okay, it's on the screen. These are not furloughs. These are people who have retired, and they are not being replaced.
For most cases.
Yeah, not on every case.
In most cases, not in all cases. Furloughs from this list that are listed under number two.
I should say, none of the teachers are being furloughed.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go to...
Mr. Reba?
Mr. Benomo, number one, A through W.
I'm, no on C, no on K, yes on everything else.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes on everyone, but regrets the letter K.
Mr. Fume?
I echo Mr. Chapman, regrets on letter K, but yes on everyone.
Mrs. K?
Yes, I'm also sorry to see Mrs. Makuta go, and I would like to vote no on L.
Okay. Mr. Mahalik?
I'm gonna vote yes and regretfully state that I don't wanna see any one of these go, so... Yes, Ms. Makuta, you're, you're wonderful, amazing, but every one of these positions have contributed to this district in, in, in many, many, many ways. Something like the print, the print shop technician is a vital, vital position, and maybe you don't think it unless you're waiting for a couple hundred copies to assess your children, then you realize just how important and, and specific that, that role is. So regretfully on every one of these.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No on, no, no on C, no on L.
Yes on everything else?
Yes on everything else.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes on all, with regrets to all.
Mr. Zola?
Yes on all, wish it could be different.
Mr. John?
Yes on all.
Number two, recommend board authorize the following furloughs and any related actions to implement the furloughs for the following individuals. Letter A, Chris Capazzo, SPO. Letter B, James Patterson, SPO. Letter C, Laney Drobnak, Community Relations Director. Letter D, George Joseph, Supervisor of Support Services. And letter E, William Gerhart, Print Shop Technician.
Still moved.
Second.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Reba?
Mr. Benomo?
No on D, yes on everything else.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes, and once again, with regrets.
Mr. Fume?
Yes, regrets.
Mrs. K?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No on D, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes, with regrets.
Mr. Zola?
Yes.
And Mr. John?
Unfortunately, yes.
Motion passes.
Number three, recommend board approve the...
Mr. Reba?
Number three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number four, recommend board approve the creation of...
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number four, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number five, recommend board approve the transfer of Barbara Mahovich from the General Secretary.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number six, recommend board approve the transfer of Roxanne Pamiere.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number seven, recommend board approve the consolidation of seventh and eighth grade basketball from two teams to one.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number eight, recommend board terminate the agreement with...
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number eight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number nine, recommend board approve the termination of...
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
Number nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number 10, recommend board approve the change from full-day kindergarten to half-day kindergarten.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Number 10, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
Number 11, recommend...
To change number 11, I forget, December, January, December.
Any public comment if we add December to 11A?
Yeah, it's changing the motion, absolutely.
On number 11, the four-day week, originally on A, it said months of January and February, it's going to be changed December, January, and February. So if anybody from the audience would like to come up and talk about the changes, you're entitled to do that. If not, then we will proceed.
Number 11, recommend board choose one of the following four-day school week options. Letter A, four-day school weeks are from Tuesday through Friday for the months of December, January, and February. Letter B, four-day school weeks are from Tuesday through Friday for the entire school year.
So moved. Second.
We need to pick, uh, pick one.
We have to pick...
Or we could, we could call, we could call a roll and just pick A or B when we call your name.
Call a roll and pick A or B.
That's right. Any questions first off?
No.
Mr. Benomo, A or B?
A.
A.
Mr. Chapman?
A.
Mr. Fume?
A.
Mrs. K?
A.
Mr. Mahalik?
I'm gonna go for A, although I, I can tell you, we're gonna see savings, and next year will be B. B will be A, and that's what's gonna happen, but I'll go with A.
Mr. O'Donnell?
A.
Mrs. Scarsella?
A.
Mr. Zola?
A.
And Mr. John?
A.
Motion passes for letter A.
And finally, number 12, recommend board reduce the annual teachers procurement card.
Second.
Any questions on 12?
Number 12, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion passes.
If anyone from the audience would like to make any comments on non-agenda items, you may do so at this time. Non-agenda items. If not...
Make a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.